Thank you. Any comments from any other board members?
I'd just say it's good to see this group. They're all former colleagues. Wonderful people, all of them.
Right. Way to go. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, continuing on, I have communication from Board of Education members. I'm going to-
Mrs. Carmody, if I can just interrupt for just a moment, I just want to have it on the record, there are no email communications sent to the board.
From the public, I'm sorry.
From the public.
Okay, I apologize, I forgot that part.
Yeah.
Mr. Canellin, you don't have any, do you? Okay. Um, board communications, I want to, I would like to do two things before I get to the rest of the board. I want to read to you a statement from Rachel Walker, who is a STEPS board member. On March 10th, 2021, 65 Army National Guard troops left from Southington Armory for a tour of duty in Africa. And you might remember that's when our DePaul students were all lined up to say goodbye to them and our police officers and so forth. The STEPS Coalition initiated the task of sending boxes to them in May. In addition, the American Legion Auxiliary Kiltanic Post 72 has kindly donated $500 towards the mailing expenses of these boxes. We are now reaching out to our community to help fill these boxes, which are located at several locations in town, including the YMCA, the Southington Municipal Center, the Southington Town Hall, the Southington Public Library, Calendar House Senior Center, Southington High School, and Fancy Bagels on Queen Street. A list of the most needed food, hygiene, and miscellaneous items will be shared with the Southington Public School staff and families. We will send a flyer to all of them telling them of our needs. Rachel has been involved with the auxiliary for many, many years. You might remember in the parking lot behind the Y, she had two big book collection boxes, and she would collect the books and sell them and can take all of that money and contribute that to buying things for our kids in school and for our veterans. So I certainly encourage the public to look for where those boxes are, and the list of items will be sent to the public in a flyer. And the second communication that I have is that SEA contract negotiations will be starting in August, if you can believe that. And I need to name a negotiating committee at our next meeting. So I ask my fellow board members to please let me know if you are interested, to please send me an email, and I will look at the names and at the next meeting, name the committee. It starts in August. Sherry, how long did you say you thought that might be?
Traditionally, the negotiations run until about the end of October. By statute, things have to be wrapped up in November.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Sherry. All right, any other board members with communications? Am I missing any hands up?
Yes, um, I would like to make, to explain a response to some of the events and some of the the words that were spoken on Monday night when the town council met. The first puzzling comment was a town council saying we need to show more transparency. Just for the public's information, if they don't know this, we held a number of public workshops. We went page by page through our budget. We also set up a grid, which, and all those elected officials were invited, very few of them attended. We also set up a page where any of them could ask questions. Unlike past years, there was not a single question asked of anyone this year. So that's a puzzling statement that they want more transparency. The second thing that I think needs some explaining is how contracts and salaries work. Most of our employees are, work under contracts. We just mentioned the SEA negotiations. And there are statutes that govern how those contracts are negotiated. If we were to simply say, well, we can't give raises and go down the road of freezing everybody for a couple of years, the way collective bargaining works, we would lose. And we are obligated to pay whatever those contracts say. So there are increases that are contractual, that are run by statute. And by the way, for those who criticize the collective bargaining method, no one is getting rich through collective bargaining, trust me, in the town of Southington. And the third one is very troubling, and I hope the public is aware of this. By cutting as much as they did, we have now, we are working on creating a financial cliff. We are, and I don't know what we're going to do yet, reallocation, I can't speak to that, but we are using federal and state money for things that's going to disappear in three years. When that money disappears, there's going to be a huge gap between where our budget's at and where our town's tax dollars are going to cover. It would have made more sense to have incremental increases every year rather than make a draconian cut like we made Monday night. And the last point on this is, and again, I don't know how we're going to reallocate the money, but there's a possibility if we use some of the S or federal money to cover some of the salaries that, and I don't know if we're going to do this, of the existing staff, we would like to do some mitigating things for our students, to get services, social, emotional services for people because of the difficulties they've gone through in this last year. It's going to, that makes it much more difficult for us to go out and provide some of those services if we've got to use that money instead to pay what's in our operating budget. So that's all I have to say about that. I'm hopefully cleared up some of the misconceptions that I heard on Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Well said. Any other board members for communications?
I have, I have a couple of things to say. First, I want to say that tonight, and I think Mrs. Mellett mentioned it when, when she was appointed about her daughter. Tonight, the Drama Club at the middle schools and the high school are putting on a virtual show called Many Ways to Survive Life in Quarantine. Kind of timely, I'd say, right now, isn't it? So they're doing it virtually, and I thank Mr. Paul Mirai for his work with that. And I'm really, really glad that the students are going to get to do this. They weren't able to do it last year. They're doing it virtually this year, so I'm really excited for them. So I think that's wonderful. Um, and I just want to, secondly, congratulate Mrs. Mellett, and just want to say really quickly, just that, you know, working in finance with her, the information she brings, the knowledge she brings, the numbers she brings, and the credibility she brings, I'm very excited and I'm looking forward to working with her. She had, she said she had a great mentor in Mrs. D'Nello. She had big shoes to fill, but just to remind everybody, like, like I think we all know, nobody replaces anybody. Right? They come in and they make the job theirs. So I wish you the best of luck, and I think it's going to be wonderful for our district. So congratulations on that. And lastly, Bob, Mr. Brown, I want to, I want to just talk about a couple of things you just said. You know, there was a comment about we need more transparency. Maybe going forward, there'll be more transparency. I don't know how we could have gotten any more transparent than we were this year. Besides our multiple workshops, we participated in multiple workshops, plus I think a couple of extra ones that were called with the Board of Finance, in which there were questions back and forth. The grid came, there were some questions from the Board of Finance, a lot of questions. And there was also a town council public hearing where several of the board members were there, the administration was there, no, no questions, no, no comments. It's, it's disturbing that they could say that there was no transparency. I think this was probably, if not the, one of the most transparent discussions ever in our budget. The, the cliff issue is huge. This is, I guess, you know, to use the term, this is kicking a can down the road. Three years from now, we are going to be in a very, very deep hole. And I'm not exactly sure, as Bob said, Mr. Brown said, I don't know how the funds are going to be used. We're going, the administration's going to be working on reallocation, but that's going to be one big hole to try to dig out of. And to push it down the road that far, I don't know what kind of an impact it's going to have on the town, but I have a feeling it's not going to be good. And, and there was a comment made that there was about $300,000 increase in this year's budget, where if we just look at that information, the budget with the $300,000 increase, we can't cover our contractual responsibilities, nor most of our obligations that are growing from last year to this year. And that's, that's very troublesome. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. And, and, and the last thing I'll say is, it, the town council has, you know, was presented with a budget number from the bipartisan Board of Finance, right? The Board of Finance did significant work, I think, with the administration, with the Board of Education members, a lot of back and forth discussions, a lot of questions, a lot of research. I commend them on the amount of research that they did, working with, with Central Office. But to be, and I think I'm speaking clearly, to be blindsided with this, I don't think that there was a discussion of a cut like this between the town council members and anybody within the administration to ask question, just to ask a question. What would the impact be if we cut your budget $1.5 million? What would that impact be on you? And how will you handle that? And that question wasn't asked, there was no, that's transparency. I'm going to ask you a question and we get answers back and forth. It wasn't done. And I don't know how you can make such a cut like that without asking, without, and I'm not saying asking for permission, asking the question of what the impact of that would be. And so, you know, it is socially and fiscally irresponsible to do something like that. So I just, I needed to, Bob, Mr. Brown, you, you explained it. Well, I just wanted to throw a couple of other echoes in there because I think it's important that people understand how this came about, and more importantly, what didn't happen during this process. Thank you.
Well said, Mrs. Shannon. Any other board members with communication? Saying that, I will move on. Next, we have communications from our administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. We have four items, and Mr. Medancy and I are going to tag team on these. The first is the Demos Grant. And you, if you listen to the town council meeting on Monday night, and we indicated in a, in a previous Board of Education meeting that we collaborated with STEPS, and STEPS was successful in obtaining this grant. The thing I, I thought was interesting in the, again, in the comments on Monday night is that there was no mention of the collaboration on, or, and we're actually the fiscal agent. And so we agreed to work with STEPS on that. Had we not done that, they would not have been able to obtain the grant. And we've done that in the past with the original STEPS grant, as a matter of fact, for 10 years. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. D'Nello, 10 years, correct? And so we look forward to doing that again, and we were, and we were happy to do it, quite frankly. There is a tremendous opportunity here for funds to be brought into the community to provide preventive services and educational services for youth and teens in our community. So we're really pleased with that, and we were pleased that the grant was awarded. Down the road, we'll see, but I, they're pretty confident that that grant will be renewed for, for good chunks of time down the road. The second item I'm going to ask Mr. Medancy to talk about the handwritten thank you cards for staff, Mr. Medancy.
Thank you, Mr. Medancy. Hold on, I got an echo here. Good. So can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I thought there was an echo. I think the timing was good in terms of Joyce's presentation tonight, Mrs. McElhoun, in terms of kindness and empathy and giving and caring, and it ties nicely into this item. The Grace United Methodist Church has kind of undergone a congregational task of handwriting personalized thank you cards for every person in our entire organization, ranging from central office administrators, right, through building principals, to teachers, to paraeducators, to custodians, to secretaries, to crossing guards, to bus drivers, anyone who in any way, shape, or form is affiliated with our school system. They have written out over 1,300 personalized handwritten thank you cards for, for their efforts this year, which is just a tremendous undertaking and a wonderful gesture of kindness and care. And I think we could use a little bit more of that right now, quite honestly. So thank you to Grace United Methodist Church for that. And then the STEM Without Boundaries event, I would also like to present on, and I just want to read if I can quickly. I asked the teacher who's leading that group to share a little bit with me more about it. And the teacher is Victoria Ogdensky, and she is a science teacher at the high school. And this is a teacher who, I mean, we're, it's Teacher Appreciation Week last week, and here it is, this person is sending me an email thanking me for allowing her to run a STEM event on a Saturday night for kids. So I had to respond and let her know that, no, the irony here is that I should be thanking her. This is a teacher who's also engaged in credit recovery for our kids, and has stepped in to fill in for a teacher who's, when we were short staff in that department, helped with some planning and instruction for a certain class. So, you know, just the epitome of a professional. She wanted to really recognize and really, like any class person would, pass the recognition out to her students. Her club president, Kate Cantillion, she thought deserved special praise for the outstanding job of planning and executing the STEM night. She's a biology student who had approached Victoria with the request and asked her to be the club advisor. Mrs. Clark, Mr. Pepe, and Victoria set up the Southington chapter of STEM Without Boundaries, and it's now an official Southington High School club. It has 35 members, and, you know, upon the establishment, they began planning the first annual STEM night. They had virtual meetings throughout the year. They collaborated via their Canvas course, and they worked with the STEM Without Boundaries parent organization to bring the chapter, the resources that would, that would help structure and planning with the event. The students brainstormed the local STEM organizations, what they want, who they wanted to invite and reach out as presenters, and many presenters agreed to participate. And just so you know, the STEM Without Boundaries event was really meant to, for younger students. So this is a nice, again, a nice gesture of citizenship. You know, if you think about our vision of a graduate, this is an example of our older students mentoring and guiding our younger students. And I would just like, lastly, to offer a shout out to the Kate, the club president, Gabby Bruce, the vice president, Maria DeToda, Niall Mulrooney, and Madison Hendricks, the historians, and their secretary, Remsha Hussein. It's just a really nice event all the way around, and to have 35 kids, you know, coming together to plan a virtual event on a Saturday evening for elementary school age kids just talks about the character of those children and what they're willing to do to give back to the community during these trying times. And again, a huge shout out to the teacher. It's just a testament to her professionalism and commitment to the kids in terms of her willingness to undertake this at this time as well. That's it for me. Thank you.
That concludes our-
We have one more item, one more item.
We'll have one more, one more item, Mrs. Carmody.
Sorry, the senior class events update, I'm sorry.
Except what I would like to ask our students. So Jalissa, Omret, and Brett, are any or all of you going to be commenting on senior class activities ending the year? Because if you are, then I will just defer to you.
We were going to make a couple of comments about it. It was just the extent of what day it is, what time and where, for the most part. So if, if we don't cover anything, then let us know.
I will, I will leave it to you then, and if, if in fact, there's, there's something else there, I will raise my hand and we can add.
Mr. Canellin, if I can, I want to add one last. It's a small thing, but you guys were all part of it, but I just think it speaks to all of the adults in our organization. Mrs. Colgrove staying tonight, making sure that, as every student was recognized, because they couldn't be handed a certificate, they would at least be able to see the certificate that was printed in their name. So to be in the office after hours, and I'll have you know, she scrambled right up to the 11th hour to make sure the camera was facing the right way so they could see their names and their certificates. And I often talk, it's like the little things like that, you know, as simple as that may seem, that make it a special organization, go on that little extra mile for kids whenever we can. So thank you to Teresa for that tonight.
Amen. Those are, those are examples. You know, when people ask us, well, why do your students do so well? Because we're open about the fact that we, our funding, our per pupil funding is not appropriate, not adequate. It's just, it's just simply not given where we are. And I'm talking about the data collected by the State Department of Education. Our wealth rank is about in the middle. Our per pupil funding is continually in the bottom. So I say, well, you know, if we're not funding you well enough, how do your students do so well? We've got great families who support their students, they support their teachers. We've got tremendous staff members who do things such as what Mr. Medancy just outlined. Listen to the words about that teacher and the STEM program that she worked on and put together with those students. That happens every single day. That happens every single day. All our staff come and they, they love these kids and they knock themselves out. So now I'm getting on my soapbox a little bit, but it's true. That's why our students do well, not because we have tons of money, because clearly, clearly we don't. So it's a real credit to all of those folks, and it's a credit to Board of Education members. Between the Board of Education and the administration, over the years, we have kept the class sizes, particularly at the elementary level, low. Not crazy low, but we've kept them low. And that's what helps teachers be able to address the needs of individual students because they're not in overcrowded classrooms. So there are a variety of factors there, and I just wish that there were a little more money put towards the per pupil expenditure part of it, because think how much more we could, we could possibly do. So that was unplanned, and I apologize. That's it. I'm, we'll turn it back over to you, Mrs. Carmody, for our students.
So we're going to go to the student reps, and I don't know which one wants to go first.
I'll be starting and I miss Carmody.
Okay, Brett, go ahead.
Sure. So first off, we're going to talk about our robotics team. So COVID could not stop our robotics team. Like other groups, they are currently planning an end of year gathering and awards night. The team this year worked especially hard within the giving restrictions and accomplished an enormous amount of activities ranging from workspace home field to social distancing, just, excuse me, distancing community activities to online STEM reach out. So now for some athletics, with a full spring sports season returning this year after last year's quote-unquote lost season due to pandemic, the Blue Knights' spring sports teams are enjoying a terrific spring season, heading into the final two weeks of the regular season before CIAC postseason tournament begins on Tuesday, June 1st. With the final third of the season still being played, alternate the Southington High School interscholastic athletic programs have qualified for CIAC postseason tournament play, tournament play led by the baseball, softball, girls' cross, boys' volleyball, and girls' outdoor track and field teams that are sports outstanding records of 13 to 1, 11 to 1, 10 to 1, 8 to 1, and 5 to 1 respectively.
Good evening, everyone. Earlier this afternoon, the SHS Girls and Boys Track and Fields Program celebrated Senior Day at Home versus Simsberry, recognizing 53 female and male track and field seniors on the turf field before their final home meet. And this Saturday, the Blue Knights freshman and senior varsity meet, called the Brashmore Meet, for up and coming CIAC track and field athletes throughout the state. The final regular season baseball yard goes, when the Blue Knights will meet the May 26th at 6:30 PM.
I'm going to finish up for her. So for continuing off sports, the Diamond Club is going to be doing a pre-sale of tickets in advance of the game, and tickets are going to be available onsite for purchase at the gate as well. And I'm going to leave for Brett for some scholars, for some senior night, senior event stuff.
Yeah, so like Mr. Canellin mentioned, some of the senior events, some updates on that. Scholarship night is May 21st at 6:00 PM on Fontana Field. Class night is May 27th at the high school at 6:00 PM. And then I'll leave it to Omret to finish off some of the senior events.
Continuing off, class day is May 28th at High Meadows in North Granby. It'll be like a morning to 3:00 or 4:00 PM event. Prom is June 30th at Lake Compounds, and we're all very excited for it. Some other stuff going on is there's awards night was hosted on May 6th on Fontana Field. It went very smoothly. It was a bit chilly, but other than that, everyone enjoyed it. We had the National Honor Society and the World Language Honor Society induction, May 11th, also on the field, which also went very smoothly. AP testing is about halfway through, and testing is going to end May 28th, so we're hanging in there. I don't know if Jelise is back yet, but I can continue on. SHS Spring Drama Show is going to be May 22nd, May 23rd, and then motorcades, the motorcade is happening on June 15th, and more info will be coming out shortly about that.
Mr. Canellin, anything that you would like to add?
If you don't mind, Mrs. Carmody, yes. I just wanted to say two things, well, three things, actually. The luncheon is the military luncheon that we've had over the years. We are reinstituting this year, and that's to celebrate our, and thank our students who will be entering the military after graduation, and that's for students who attend Southington High School, but we also have some students who go to other schools who will be invited as well. So that will be at noon time, it's going to be under the pavilion at the back nine. So a little change in venue so that we could do it outside and be use all of our mitigation strategies, if you will, so that we, our students will be comfortable, our students' parents and guardians will be comfortable. Should be a nice event. It's on the 27th at noon time, and we're going to try to put everything back into it that we, you know, that we normally do for students. So that is one item. The, you mentioned the senior motorcade, which I was thrilled that we're, that we're doing again. That was just so much fun last year, and I think people will enjoy it again this year. On the 17th, this is not necessarily a senior event, but I wanted to mention the torch run for Special Olympics is going to happen again. And it's going to be the reverse course this year. Instead of starting at the Berlin Town Line, it's going to start at the Cheshire-Southington Town Line, come up all the way up Route 10 to Hobart Street, a right on Hobart Street, a right on Pleasant Street, a left on Berlin, and then out Kensington Road to the Berlin line. The, the, our friends in the police department have invited me to run every year, and my son Jonathan runs with me. It's a, it's an 11-mile jog. It's, it's, you know, so it's, it's an easy pace. My son was quick to point out that because of the reverse course, we will be going uphill at the end. So that should be interesting. Anyone who wants to come out is welcome. We'll get notices out. We usually have quite a group of students and staff, and the, the folks from the state level of Special Olympics say that this is the best crowd that they get, which shouldn't surprise anyone, because that's what we do here. And the very last thing, which I believe we all know, I just wanted to reiterate that graduation will be on Friday, June 18th. Ceremony will start at 4:00 PM in the afternoon, starting a little earlier this year, which will give our seniors a little extra time for their after-graduation activities, which will be at, Mr. Sheldrick?
It will be at Lake Compounds, am I correct?
You are correct. Very good. You passed the quiz. And that is it, Mrs. Carmody. Thank you.
Any, any questions for our student reps? No, I don't see any hands, right? All right, moving right along, we have our committee reports. Colleen, the Elementary Facilities Committee, on our April 27th meeting. You're muted, Colleen.
Okay. Yes, we had our meeting April 27th. We had a discussion regarding the Collier presentation. We hadn't gotten any questions from any other board members. We decided that we needed some additional input, an additional dialogue with the possibility of a presentation before the town council. We also discussed the location of the Karen Smith Academy and developing EdSpecs that could be used for analysis of the project costs. You've all seen the minutes from the meeting. We gave the superintendent two tasks. One was to discuss with the town manager a presentation at the town council meeting, and the administration was going to continue dialogue with Colliers. We also have just recently decided, as of today, I believe, Mr. Canellin, that we are going to have an additional meeting on May the 18th to further discuss our meeting with the town council. So that is the report. Mr. Canellin, do you have anything you want to add to that? No? Okay. Any questions from anyone? It's going to be Tuesday, May the 18th at 4 o'clock. And all board members are invited, if they'd like to attend.
Virtual meeting?
Yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. Any questions, Mrs. Clark? The next is the personnel report. May I have a motion?
Yeah, prove the personnel report as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Any objections, questions? Okay, thank you once again, Michelle, during the report. Old Business Town Government Communications. I had asked, we tabled at our last meeting, the appointment of the Town Cable Advisory Council, and I had asked for- And I had asked for anyone to volunteer to please contact me and I had several board members that did. I have chosen Mr. Darrenowski, one of our senior, notice I use the word senior, uh, board members who has the most knowledge on this committee to be our representative. So I thank you very much, Mr. Darrenowski for doing that. And I thank the other board members for volunteering. Questions, comments? Okay.
Do I see any? Carmody, could you?
What, Colleen?
Now I have to make the motion.
There's no motion needed for that.
No, for the next.
Oh, I haven't gotten there yet, Colleen. Could you hold on?
No.
Well.
Thanks for asking though.
Here, Colleen, I'm going ahead now. Um.
Okay.
All right, here we go. Um, the next is, uh, policy three, two, eight, one. And Colleen, you may now speak.
I just had to find the motion. I have to open my other iPad. Move to approve policy three, two, eight, one. Code of Conduct Child Nutrition Programs as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, any opposed? Policy carries. Go ahead, Colleen.
Okay, uh, move to approve policy three, three, two, oh, purchasing procedures as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Mesh, motion passes. Um, next would be Bob.
Yep, I move to approve the S H S Mandarin two, three, four course proposal and curriculum review as recommended by the, unfortunately that's, it's listed wrong in the, uh, motion, but it's the Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
Right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Um, motion carries. That, that's wonderful. I'm so thrilled about that. All right, new business, we have our twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget reallocation adoption. What do I have to do with that, Mr. Kinnon? You're muted.
Reviewed.
What? If you, correct. It, here's the thing, because it was such a surprise to everyone, uh, that budget was reduced by such a significant amount. Uh, I think the appropriate thing to do, quite frankly, would be to table the adoption portion of that. I know Mrs. Danello has some information or certainly some comments that she would like to share. And I know that um, she's working on a finance committee meeting for next Wednesday. Is that, that correct, Mrs. Danello? Okay. Do you have comments that you, that you want to share about that?
I do. First, I'd like to start on a positive note. I've yet to have the opportunity to congratulate, uh, Mrs. Mallett in her new role as the Director of Business and Finance. So, um, I know that Mrs. Mallett is going to do an amazing job. I have all the confidence in the world in her. And, uh, she transitioned so nicely six years ago into the business world of education. Um, and has always stepped up to every challenge. So congratulations and, um, thank you to the Board of Education members for having your confidence in her for her new role. Um, changing gears, um, I do have a couple of comments in regards to, uh, the difficulty we are having with the budget reallocation. We had every intention of hoping that you'd be able to adopt a plan this evening. We had our plan all drafted and ready to share with you. Uh, first thing Tuesday morning, following the council meeting, um, and had uh, no idea that we would be looking at an additional one point five million dollar reduction. Um, so we immediately, uh, met, uh, Tuesday morning to start coming up with a plan. And what we would like to do is bring a draft of a reallocation plan to the finance committee meeting that is scheduled for Wednesday, uh, the nineteenth at six thirty, following our self-insurance committee meeting. Um, it is a challenge, um, and it's unfortunate that the only way we're going to be able to balance this budget is to tap into those A R P S R funds. Um, and as Mr. Brown alluded to and Mr. O'Shaughnessy alluded to earlier this evening, um, those funds were clearly set up for learning loss. Actually, twenty percent of that four point one million dollars specifically needs to be used for learning loss. And when we, um, the superintendent, Mr. Medansi and I sat in on a webinar with the Commissioner of Education um, here for the state of Connecticut, uh, just earlier this week. And we learned about their thoughts of how to use that, those funds. And all they talked about was how it was going to transform education. Um, she made a comment that the S R one funding that came available last summer was to help districts survive education. The S R two funds were to help us thrive with education and provide summer programming. And their goal with this new round of S R funding was to transform education. And they provided us many links and resources and hopes that communities would be, the boards of educations throughout the state would be using to bring new programs into the schools. And unfortunately, I believe that we are going to be in a position where close to one million dollars um, will be needed to account for the one point five million dollars in reductions to balance this budget and use those S R three funds to make that happen. And by doing that, you're essentially setting up a funding cliff because you are going to be funding current salaries that the board has funded in their operating budget currently and have to transition those dollars truly supplant. Um, and yes, there is a one provision in the language about this grant that provides that opportunity. And I shared that with all the board members, um, yesterday, I think I sent the email. And you could see all the bullets of all the ways they thought that it wanted us to use the money. But they did provide an out and the out was really supposed to be for towns and cities that had suffered severe revenue losses. And in an effort to not have to increase the mill rate because of revenue losses, they left a statement that said, you can use the S O three fundings for other activities that are necessary to maintain operations of and continuity in services, including continuing to employ existing or hiring new L E A staff. And because of that one statement, we are going to have to consider funding the new staff that we felt was so important within our special, special education portion of the budget and reallocate some current F T Es to be funded with these S R funds in an effort to maintain our current level of services. And the board is going to have some serious decisions to make moving forward in how you try to mitigate the fiscal cliff that will occur by doing this. And we plan to talk more about that at our finance committee meeting. And I really encourage any board members that would like to join the finance committee to come on third, to, to, uh, join us virtually. We'll send the link to everybody. But you know, when I, when I say to try to mitigate the cliff, uh, Mr. Kinnon explained it perfectly when, uh, he and I met with Mr. Medansi earlier in the week, that I'll just use round numbers. If we have to fund ten current F T Es in our budget with S R funding for the twenty-one, twenty-two year, when you're developing your twenty-two, twenty-three budget, maybe you take a third of those salaries and try to insert them back into your operating budget. And then in the following year, take another three salaries and try to insert that back into your operating budget. Um, so that in the last year, you'll have the last three or four and four years out, when someone is putting that operating budget together, they're not trying to make up for the ten salaries that had been funded by grants over the three years. And by doing that, hopefully that will also allow for some of the funds in each of the three years of the grants to be used for the specific purpose of learning loss and creating new opportunities of transforming education. So I think it's important for the community to know that my belief at the end of the day is that this Board of Education is going to be able to adopt an operating budget on May twenty-seventh. I certainly hope that we're going to be in a position where everybody that's currently employed by the Southern Public School System is able to be, continue to be employed. And that doesn't mean that we didn't need the one point five million dollars. What it means is that the students of Southington are missing out on opportunities they could have had for the next three years by transforming education and using these S R three funds. And that's what the community members, the students and families of our community need to understand that the action of the town council on Monday night created. And three years from now, when this community is dealing with significant tax increases because of the fiscal cliff that was created, they will understand what a poor decision was made on Monday. That's all I have.
Thank you. Very well said. Thank you so much, Mrs. Danello. Any questions, comments from other board members?
I could just add, uh, one quick thing. Um, and Mrs. Danello, I think summed it up perfectly. The irony of, of asking for transparency when you drop a one point five million dollar cut at the eleventh hour on the Board of Education without any dialogue. That, that's just the irony of the situation, right? And so that, that's, that's troubling, right? And the last piece is no dialogue of what our plans may have been for those funds. And I think people are saying, well, if we knew that, maybe we, things would have played out differently. But we haven't even gotten the assurances that Mr. Kinnon has to sign off on and we won't get them until May seventeenth. So we don't even necessarily know kind of what, other than a bulleted point, one page document, what the rules are for engagement here with the, with these funds. And in addition to that, there's a requirement that this bit, this plan is developed and the public has an opportunity to provide feedback and input over a thirty day period before we can even approve or submit anything in term, for, for approval. So that's going to be well after the adoption of this budget would have occurred. So for people to think that we would have been able to just pin up a plan and share it publicly, I think is just a lack of understanding as to the process and the regulations that were tied to with the use of these funds. And so I won't go on anymore. Um, I think between Mr. Kinnon and I unfortunately baited him and the administrator reported to get out of his soapbox, but between you can, I think you can sense the tone and, and, uh, the feeling amongst us of, for me personally, deflated and disheartened is the best two words I have. Uh, I'm just very surprised that that was the action.
More importantly, Mr. Medansi and the rest of the board, uh, and Sherry alluded to this, what we are not giving our students how that money was supposed to be used to help us make up for the shortcomings that happened during the pandemic. That, that really was the purpose of all of that. Sherry, I think you clearly stated that. And unfortunately, our kids are not going to get that. And I think that is really the message that we need to get out to the public of how that is going to hurt our kids. Any other board members?
Mr. Kinnon had something.
I'm sorry, what, Steve?
Mr. Kinnon had something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim. I'm.
That's fine. Thank, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Medansi said because I heard through other sources today, exactly that, that we were being criticized for not having a quote unquote plan. Uh, Stephen, Sherry, and if Jennifer, if you're still on, correct me if I'm wrong, was not the webinar where we were provided with some information from the State Department of Education just this past Monday, May tenth at ten o'clock. That's the webinar when the state began to unpack some of the requirements. And as Mr. Medansi just said, we'd have, we haven't even received what the, you always have to sign off on assurances when you get state and or federal grants. So there are a number of assurances. We don't even know what those are yet. So to be critical of us and saying, well, you didn't have, you didn't have a plan, I think is just complete and total nonsense. We shared with the Board of, and that was a Board of Finance member. I'm going to be really clear about that, who, who made that comment. The information we shared with the Board of Finance and would have with the town council, had anybody bothered to ask us, is that we didn't have the information from the State Department of Education. They didn't have it from the federal government. The State Department of Education is still putting together the quote unquote grant application. We haven't even seen the grant application. So, you know, to be unfairly criticized for not doing something that we didn't even have guidelines to do is, is one thing. And then to turn around and make this really what I think is a horrendous cut with virtually no dialogue or discussion is a, is a huge injustice to the families in this community. Oftentimes the word taxpayer is used as if our families with children in the school system were not part of that group. My comment to the families in our community is folks, please speak out because this is about kids. There was another comment about always pumping money into the Board of Education. The last time I checked, the nine of you are not taking these funds and going on cruises or vacations to the Caribbean.
No.
This is the budget that supports education for the children of this community. So we've got about sixty-three hundred or so students. That means we have quite a few families. Hopefully people will, will speak up. Now, we're going to do the very best that we can because we always do. Just some of the examples that you just heard before of people going above and beyond. So we'll do that. And we're probably going to be making recommendations to you to use those federal funds to plug the holes in the operating budget, because that's the only way that we're going to be able to provide the services to students and maintain jobs. Otherwise we'd be laying people, which wouldn't be fair. So what happens if you use resources in one area, you don't have it to use in another area. So we won't have those resources to provide those additional services over and above and beyond, which is what it was designed for. So that's my take on it. And I, I still go back to what I originally said when you asked the question, Mrs. Carmody. I, I think the board really does not have another alternative this evening except to table any action on this reallocation until we can go through the process, have the finance committee meeting, get some additional information out to the board and then have some additional discussion about it.
Yeah, Mr. Kinnon, if I can, I'm, one last thing, I promise, uh, because I don't want to belabor this. The other irony when we talk about transparency is one particular Board of Finance member, and you guys were at the workshops with me, recommended we cut one million dollars before S R two or S R three was ever even announced and we knew we were getting it. So to say there was federal funding and you didn't have a plan when you were already proposing cutting a million before you even knew there were grants coming is interesting timing to me. And also I was at both of those workshops and many of you were with me at both of them. And they asked, once it was announced, before they made their, their final adoption, what, what are you going to do with that? What about that one point eight million dollars? And if you remember, I went down to a laundry list of everything from interventionist to credit recovery, to reducing class sizes, you know, in section numbers and, and grade levels to technology. I, I explained to anybody who was there and would listen what our plans were. And so, and I did that at the, and I didn't even expect for it to happen. But again, I was asked at the public hearing of the town council. I was just sitting there as an audience member to listen to what the public had say. And I was asked what we would be doing. And I again answered for people who were there, what we would be doing. So I, I'm not sure what else we could have done differently. Um, and, and I just hope in the future, you know, uh, things can be different. I guess that's the best way I can phrase it.
Can I just add the dates? Because Mr. Kinnon referred to that webinar that we attended on, which was Monday morning, May tenth. Today is the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Um, the letter that came out about the webinar was, uh, dated May ninth. And, um, on May seventeenth is when we are expecting to see the assurances that need to be signed off on. On May twenty-fourth, we're anticipating the application for the grant to be available. On a side note, the other S R grants were always delayed, but right now they're hoping for five twenty-four. Um, on sixth, June seventh, they are expecting the Connecticut State Department of Ed to have information that was due to the United, to the U S Department of Education. Um, so they are not expecting our applications to be sent in until mid-August. So they are trying to give districts an opportunity to create thoughtful well out plans when you're talking about how you'll utilize four point one million dollars over three years, because the funding goes through September of twenty twenty-four. So the app, you know, we don't know what to include in an application because we haven't seen it yet. And it, the actual due date will not be until mid-August.
Thank you, Sherry. Any other board members with comments?
Uh, do we, do we need to have a, uh, a motion?
Yes.
To table this?
Table, a motion to table it, yes. Uh, Brett, I'm sorry, is your hand up?
Mr. Browns, oh, sorry.
Oh, may I, may I say something, speak on this just momentarily? Is, is that acceptable?
Please.
Well, I, I just want to say that I, I am by no means a professional and experienced as you guys are. And my knowledge of the subject is, is, is limited, but I, I think it's important to say that coming from a student, I can understand what you're all saying. And I was, I was talking with Amrit about this over text and I, I told her that I, I wanted to make the point that it's, it's unfortunate to see a, a governing body, especially in our town, um, have proposed pulling money from our. have proposed pulling money from our district when all of you know that education is a silver bullet when it comes to crime, poverty, innovation, education exceeding in the future. And to see something like, I believe you said either $1.5 million or $1.8 million be taken out of the Board of Education's budget, which directly and indirectly affects students specifically is, is a disappointment to see. And I don't mean to be unprofessional by any means or to insult the Town Council because I, I have met some of them, but it really is unfortunate to see that priorities in our town are being, are being stripped. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Joe, your hand is up.
I wasn't going to say anything, but you know, again, like Brett, you know, that's a great statement, especially coming from one of our students, one of our products of the education system in this town. What the Town Council did was they rolled the proverbial grenade into a room. And, you know, it, it's going to have consequences. You know, it's, I, I think the, the silver lining of this is we're going to put our heads down. We're going to do what we normally do on this board. And we're going to figure out a way to continue quality education for our students. And, you know, I, I hope we, in the years that we have set forward, I, I hope that we create a plan for this cliff that now, there's no way around it. We, we're, we're going to have some sort of issue coming down the pike. But if there's any group to do it, and as we're watching our, our new administrators and our new professionals sort of climbing the ranks and into the positions of what we have here in Southington. Again, like I, I, I'm mad. I'm, I'm not happy about it. But to, to say that we're, we're going to get through this and we're going to figure it out and we're going to, we're going to manage this the way that we normally do here on the board is they do this all the time. And we're going to figure out a way, we're going to keep delivering great quality education to our kids. This hurts me even more so because I have two kids climbing through the system right now. And, you know, some of the proposed, I guess, as Sherry eloquently put it, is, you know, essentially really transforming what education is and, and what we do and, you know, getting our kids career ready and college ready. It's, it's it's a bump in the road. But, you know, again, I, I couldn't pick a better team to be a part of mitigating this grenade in the room.
Thank you, Joe. Any other board members? Bob, is your hand up?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion if it's, if it's in order.
I think it is in order unless there's any other comments by board members. Motion, go ahead, Bob.
I move that the Board of Education table the adoption of the night of 2021, 22 operating budget until our next meeting.
Second.
Next scheduled meeting.
Okay, which is in May. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have, excuse me, discussion for the exemption of, for vaccines. Discussion on that. I don't know who wants to lead that. Joe, you asked me to make sure that we
Yeah.
put that on. So if you want to lead it, go ahead.
Great, thank you. So I just was essentially curious. I know it was sort of a relatively heated debate the past couple of weeks with, I guess, the absolving of the religious exemption for vaccines. And I was sort of curious what essentially that plan looks like in a district like Southington. And, you know, how, how do we essentially work with that? Because, you know, and I, I can only speak from my own experience being in healthcare and everything else. Some, some people decide to get one vaccine and then they choose not to get another vaccine, not, not based on, you know, anything other than, well, you know, I, I don't need this one. Or again, sort of the à la carte model. And, you know, I guess there's certain vaccines for my kids. It's not that I'm trying against vaccines to say the least. It's just more of, again, coming up with our own family plan as far as spacing, spacing them apart or going off of what works for, for our family. And, you know, how, how is that going to work moving forward for religious exemptions, medical exemptions, that type of thing? And, you know, is there a fine line that we have to walk with healthcare being protected information and that type of thing?
Hey, Tim, I'm going to, you take this one?
Sure, thank you. The, so the Tuesday webinars that we continue to have with State Department of Public Health and local health officials and State Department of Education address this very briefly. We are going to be receiving some additional guidance. Right now, the statute has been passed. And it will not be in effect for the 2122 school year, but will be in effect for the 2223 school year. And there are some guidelines with regard to deadlines in there and what enrollment means, et cetera. So we're waiting for guidance. At all school districts right now are waiting for guidance. When that guidance comes from the State Department of Education, we'll review that with our local council, if you will, shipment a good one, and, and see what that means for the district. When I looked back to some data that we put together, I want to say it was the 1718 school year, we put together the data for the 1718 school year because it was in, it was in 1819 when we had a couple of measles cases. You may recall that. And of course, we hadn't seen measles. As our medical advisor said, he had not seen, he's been a pediatrician in this community for 40 years, had not seen a case of measles in 35 or 40 years. So it was new and it threw everyone for quite a loop. But at any rate, we put together the information and we found that approximately at that time, of our student population had either a medical exemption or a religious exemption. So it's not a huge number of students. Medical exemptions are still covered under the statute that was passed. So if a student i- is medically fragile or, or has some other reason and the, the physician indicates that the student should be exempt from the required vaccinations, and there are a number of them that are covered by other state statutes, and those, that student will continue to be medically exempt. The religious exemption is a completely different situation that we've not faced before. And we're going to wait for some direction. Again, from the State Department of Education. And when we get that, of course, we'll review that with legal counsel and see, see where that takes us. So it's, there are not huge numbers of students, but, but certainly there are, there are some students and we'll, you know, again, we'll have to, we'll have to see where that goes. The statute is the statute is the statute, as they say, and we're not going to have a choice but to follow the state statute. It, it's a question of what the regulations are going to look like and what the legal guidance is going to look like and what the grandfathering position, provisions look like, et cetera. And we just, we do not have that yet. Neither does the State Department of Education. That's how new the, the language on the statute is at this point in time.
Okay. And I guess, you know, if I could just continue the, the dialogue. So I, I just to reiterate, it's too early and at this point to know exactly how there'd be any sort of, I guess, aftermath of it, if you will. So essentially families felt strongly over not vaccinating and they didn't have the opportunity to do any sort of exemption because of the Connecticut constitutional bindings for localities to provide education. It's, would you say, Tim, it's too early to tell if we'd be on the hook still for educating versus being provided some sort of like remote learning or at this point, it's probably all just making assumptions. It's not even worth even discussing.
It, it really isn't.
Okay.
Because not only do we not have the guidance, it can change several different times.
Sure.
And probably, probably will.
Okay.
Hey, Joe, does that satisfy any other questions you might have on it or anyone else?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're so welcome. And last on our agenda is the return to full in-person learning in the fall of 2021. Mr. Medanci or Mr. Canel, do you want to handle that?
Mr. Medanci will handle that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Canel, it's, it's during 2122. You sure you don't want to speak to it?
I can, if you would like.
So I wanted to bring this to the board and give board members an opportunity just to, to weigh in, if you will. I mean, as we know, at the end of the day, you know, the operations and the implementation of curriculum is obviously the responsibility of, of, you know, central office and determine how that's done. But with that said, there's, there's quite a bit, and I sent you a document, asked you all to read it ahead of tonight so that you have the information for yourself, for your own availability. But in our meeting last week with the Hartford Area Superintendent, we polled, and Tim, what is, what's in that group? Is there about 40 districts, 45 districts? It's a pretty big sized group.
Sorry, couldn't unmute myself. It's about, yeah, it's between 30, it's 38 or 39 districts.
Okay. So there are about 39 Hartford County districts. And coming off that guidance document that I sent you from the state and, and a lot of what you've heard and also with CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the state guidance, and then the Hartford Area Superintendent, there is not a district planning on offering any remote options next year for students. They are all planning for a full in-person return. Now, where remote learning may occur is where it would have always occurred in the Southington schools. We, we have had instances where students are taking online courses and whatnot for various, you know, medically fragile reasons or homebound and whatnot. And we still have the ability, means to offer that for students on a case-by-case basis. But that's all determined through, you know, the 504 plans, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and also IDEA and, and students with PP, you know, IEPs. So it's not something where people could just opt into or opt out of. And, you know, for me personally, I think, and then our students can speak to this, you know, it's been a tough year in terms of screen time and the amount of time isolated from their peers or also being pulled in and out of school with the various models. And equally frustrating, I've heard time and time again from both our administrators and our teachers, I think the frustration for many students now who are using this as a model of convenience more than necessity. You get kids who just oversleep and instead of coming into school, they just hop on and they turn on their computer camera and they're wherever they are in the house, hopping onto class today. And teachers don't always have materials converted to a digital format that are ready to upload into the digital learning platform. And in instances right now, because our numbers at the middle school and high, elementary school are especially low, most have returned. There's not a teacher streaming kids in, so they don't even know that the absent child who has decided just to hop on today is on the other end waiting to be let into the room. Because why would you, why would that be if they haven't been quarantined or they're not in, you know, the remote environment and have declared for that? We've got families taking trips. We've got families that are sitting out to be on sports teams. We've got kids that are sleeping in. I mean, we've got every reason under the sun why kids are not coming to school right now. And it, so it's perpetuating a problem that could become more serious down the road if we continue with that type of model. We, we've sent out, I've sent directly to families emails saying, please, you know, we understand it. And we've tried to be as flexible as we can, even to the point that it may not be for COVID-related reasons or for quarantine purposes. You may have some sort of hardship in your home where remote learning may be the better option right now. As long as you communicate that to, you know, one of the building administrators and they're, they're, you know, they're going to look to approve that for you because you're communicating it and it's a need, right? It's not necessarily a model of convenience. But have kids streaming from the beach down in the tropics? Absolutely. It's actually happened. Kids streaming from Florida and Disney. We have kids streaming in their car on road trips. We have kids, I mean, I don't want to put David on the spot, Falvo, but he's a teacher. I'm sure he's seen a lot of this. It's, it's just not an ideal learning environment, right? It's, that's not the interaction, the inquiry, the exposure that, that you want to, to create for students. And so what I plan on doing in the near future is sending something out to our families, kind of letting them know that, you know, based on guidance we're getting from the state right now, and hopefully with consensus of the board, obviously no, no motion to be made or actually taken that, that we, we support a full in-person return in September, you know? Interestingly enough, part of the, the S or three regs, that, that one little document that everybody seems to be leaning on because there's not much. Once we make our plan available, we also have to include on our website, a plan for the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services, which is a requirement associated with the S or three plan. So, you know, they want to see your, your safe to return in-person plans. They want you, they want them posted. And there's really, like I said, there's not a district that I'm aware of at this time. And it's even, I think what, what tilted the scales a little bit was the fact that now that 12 to 15 is already eligible for the vaccine, they had recently said that maybe younger than 12 wouldn't be until January or February of next year. And now they're saying September. So the reality is in terms of the amount of quarantining and the risk here, it, it continues to, you know, gradually decline, if you will. And lastly, as you all know, the expense that was associated with the remote academy this year, thank God goodness for the COVID relief funds, right, that we had gotten at first, the S or one, because that paid for 24 teachers to staff the remote academy for our elementary school students so that our elementary teachers thankfully didn't have to stream to two audiences. Now, eventually they did because they had students going out on quarantine that, you know, maybe the whole class wasn't out, you know? It was a close contact scenario or a bus contact. And so they had to, you know, make sure that education was accessible for their student in their class. But by and large, we tried to avoid that because it's hard enough to teach young students when they're right in front of you, developmentally, given the age and the amount of interactions and type of interaction you need to have with your students. So clearly, we don't have the grant funding to staff a remote academy and open that up again. So we're at the point now that that's where we're leaning. I didn't know if anybody had any thoughts, opinions or concerns about that before we start to move forward on that. And I just wanted to give the board the opportunity.
Joe, Joe, go ahead, Joe.
I can't believe I'm saying this, but I, I agree with the state of Connecticut's such a recommendation of that. And Steve, I, I am full-fledged support. The kids have to be back to school and, you know, again, it boils down to even though it's just attendance, just attendance, it creates accountability. It creates successful adults and civic-minded people in the future. And, you know, I, I, I got your back, man. We got to do this. So.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Well, Steve, I, I certainly, I think there's no question that we have to get back to in-person learning. And I think the governor is going to issue some kind of statement about that in the near future also. So. All right, any other board members with any other question? That is our last agenda item. On, do I have Mr. Darrenowski available?
Muted.
Dave, would you want to?
Wake up, Dave. Mr. Darrenowski, wake up.
No, I'm, I'm awake. It's just that my, my mouse isn't working. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Third. Fourth.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone, for a wonderful meeting. Have a good rest of the evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.